Good afternoon. It is three P M and I'll call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Present.
Director Duff.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you. We have corn.
Thank you. Seeing that all five of us are present, we'll skip item three. Item four, Pledge of Allegiance, we will do on Monday. Item five, Rules of Procedure. Our counselor isn't here, so we'll skip that. Item six, Public Input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
President Sewell, we do not.
Thank you. Item seven, Human Resources Report, we will do on Monday.
Correct.
Moving on to action items. Item eight, The Public Hearing will be on Monday, but this will be for Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-three, Energy Services Contract with Staton Solar Incorporated. It is recommended to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-three and authorize the General Manager to negotiate and execute a power purchase agreement and solar facility lease agreement with Staton Solar Incorporated to design, build, and construct approximately four megawatts of renewable solar energy at seven M S W D sites. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. As you mentioned, the public meeting will be on Monday. Typically, we don't present an item in the study session when we know we have a public hearing as we want to do it for the record. However, I do want to take this opportunity and inform the board that we will be recommending on Monday that we continue the public hearing until the next board meeting on the sixteenth of September. We'll still go through the process because Staton's going to be here as well as the financial agent to talk about the project, get their resumes and all that information on the record for the public hearing. If you do look in your packet, you'll see the track changes was on for that contract. That was a mistake that we made. It makes it very difficult to see exactly where the contract is today. We are, while we've got most of the key points of the contract negotiated, we're now focused on the lease agreement, but so they can basically take some of our site over and then lease it back to us and that, and then those kinds of things. And then we want to have legal go over the entire document to make care, make sure it's perfectly pristine before we bring it to you. In addition to that, as you, as you read, it doesn't get allowed the, excuse me, the general manager to negotiate and execute contract. So technically, we could go through with it, but I just don't feel comfortable with it in its current state. I want to bring you a book more polished document in September. So I still want to have the public hearing. I still want you to have the opportunity to talk to the contractor as well as his financial agent on Monday as planned, and then we'll bring back to you the final document for execution on in September. So hopefully, that clarifies some of those questions that you may have regarding the contract itself, because it was difficult to read after going through it a couple of times. So I apologize about that. Okay. So with that, I'm here as well at staff, and Kenwood Energies is on the line if you have any questions specific about the project today.
Do we have any questions or comments? Director Duff?
I don't know if I should be proceeding now or later, or if I should send my contract questions to you. I, I did go through the contract, even though it was difficult.
Okay.
And I did have concerns and questions. So I don't know if spending everyone's time going over them, if it's not ready, or if I should just forward you my questions.
At this point, it'd probably be just as easy to send us what you have, and then we'll give that Kenwood Energies and we'll insert those, those points if they're, you know, we'll, we'll respond to you. And if there's any key points that we want to take forward, then we'll do that with the, with the contractor in the next thirty days.
Okay. Yeah, because there were some details in the contract that were a little bit confusing. And just to kind of a simple example, so that maybe you can know where I'm heading out with it. It talked on the very first general terms and conditions. It talked about a one hundred and five percent uptime or a hundred and five percent annual projected amount of what we would pay. But then we're only being guaranteed ninety percent. And then it talked about if we got more than what they anticipated, there would be a true up. I need more clarification on, on how that is equating. To me, the way that it's worded could be interpreted multiple ways. So that was just one small example of some of the questions that I had.
Well, that's more of a clarifying question, not necessarily a contract comment. And Tim is our expert, and he's on the call, and he may be able to answer that question for you today.
Okay, whatever you guys.
And are you available?
Yes, yes, I'm right here. So I, I'm not a, you know, it, it is, you know, it's a long contract and it is kind of complicated. So I can answer your question, hopefully clarify things. So the first one, the hundred and five percent is, what we are doing is we are limiting, we're trying to create a maximum that you would ever have to pay. In some cases, in some of these contracts that others sign, you know, it's unlimited, and sometimes you can't use that energy, but you have to pay for it. So what we are saying in most of the cases, in most of these facilities, we are not generating a hundred percent of the energy. So we'll agree to buy up to a hundred and five percent of what we expect the system to generate. Okay, separate from that and unrelated is there is a performance guarantee. And if they are to, this is to protect the district's projected cash flow. And if they, the system is underperforming consistently, then the district will get paid, it's what it expected to save over the life of the system. And if it's underperforming, that means it will not be hitting that hundred and five percent that you would pay for. You would still be paying if it's at ninety percent, you'd pay for ninety percent of what was projected. And if it's under ninety percent, then you actually start getting compensated for that underperformance.
Okay. And so then if, I guess, looking at it in the reverse, let's say we were getting ninety percent on regular, let's say, but we were paying the one oh five. I read that there's a true up every three years that takes place. Is three years standard in the solar industry?
It's reasonably standard, yes. And I, I had to clarify, if, if it's generating ninety percent, that hundred and five doesn't apply because there's only ninety percent. So you'd be paying for ninety percent of the projected.
It sounds like, in the way that it's written, it sounds like we pay a hundred and five, and then in the true up later of whatever the projected amount that they determine of pre-construction, and then later in that true up, it all gets, and that's where I get kind of scared, because that relies on a lot of memory and a lot of maintaining documentation and things like that.
Yeah. So if, specifically, if you have some questions about the wording, because it is not intended to say that at all. What it's intended to say is we're paying for whatever energy that is generated only. And that's, that's where the hundred and five comes in, but we are allowing them to overgenerate, and we'll accept that energy and pay for it. The performance guarantee is, is to protect you against underperformance, meaning that, you know, again, if it's under ninety percent, you would only be paying for ninety percent, and that's how that paragraph should read. And if you see something that's confusing in that paragraph, let me know, and I'll, we'll fix it, address it.
Thank you very much. And then just to kind of continue down that path, I think the, the ninety percent is also industry standard, because I know some of the solar purveyors that came trying to sell me were like trying to guarantee ninety-six and ninety-four percent. Ninety is the, the average or the standard?
Yeah, some people are eighty-five or even eighty percent, but we have the N R's.
Perfect. And then you were aware that we had big time constraints for our N M two, but they have an excused performance twelve-month delay that is allowable. A twelve-month delay for excusable reasons would obviously eliminate our N M two. So I just kind of wanted to make sure that we are, are double checking any of the language, and I don't know if that's for you, Mister, Sir at Kenwood, but, or if it's for our attorneys, but that's a concern that I have. If, if the whole reason we're, we're entering into this contract is because they are giving us multiple assurances that they'll be able to get this in place in majority to include the N M two. So I just want to make sure that these very vague, excusable instances or excusable events that could give them a up to twelve-month allowable delay is a little concerning to me.
We are.
Rest I'll email.
Yeah, we are aware and are trying very hard to put the onus of meeting that N M two deadline on them.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you for your clarification. I think the rest are, are primarily legal, so I will send that on. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Vice President? Director Martin?
No.
Director Martin Hoffman. And I think all my questions are pretty much answered with that, but does it make sense? I know that the time crunch of the N M two point O, should it get reviewed sooner to have a special meeting to just, I mean, if by the end of the month we had it ready to go, does it make sense to try and get it approved just to give them that extra couple of weeks, or?
We do have an opportunity, a workshop that's already scheduled, so we would probably do it that first week of September. However, right now, based on where we've, where our conversations are, we feel that if we bring it back in September, we're still on schedule.
Okay.
Let me state that, Tim.
Sorry, had to find mute button. Yes, that sounds right. We're planning on having the business energy review completed by next week, and then it's into legal's hands, and that's a little hard for us to predict how long that'll take. And I think the September board meeting should give enough time to be fairly certain we can meet that.
Great. Thank you, Tim. Oh, did you have something? Go ahead.
The tree removals that we were talking about being required at several of the sites when we were doing the design build plan. In this contract, it is talking about those being our responsibility and any delays that could come in us taking care of that would be not at their fault. Do we have that all in place and ready to start putting R F Ps for removing the necessary trees and shade structures or what have you?
We would actually use our existing landscaping contractor and hire them to go ahead and do that since they're already contracted, so that they're standing by.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. All right. And we had Director McKenna join us. You just missed public input. Did you have any? Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to item nine, State Advocacy Services with C A Lobby LLC. It is recommended to authorize the General Manager to execute an agreement for services with C A Lobby LLC in the amount of five thousand per month for the term beginning September first, two thousand twenty-four and ending August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. I'll allow our Assistant General Manager Marion Champion give this presentation. Marion?
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board. Today, I'm going to provide you with a brief overview of a new agency that staff would like to bring on board to provide state legislative and regulatory advocacy services, similar to what Carpe and Clay has does for us at the federal level. We are continuing to see an increase in proposed and adopted legislation each session, leading to regulations that will continue to impact the district operations and ultimately our customers. As we outlined in our strategic plan and smart bowls number one point four and two point one, we aim to increase our excellence in regulatory compliance, and we would like to engage and build stronger relationships with state regulators at the legislature. Rosanna Cavacho, who heads up California Lobby, is no stranger to the district, and she's worked for the district in previous years, and most recently through the California Groundwater Coalition, which M S W D is a member of. Rosanna will be here on Monday to guide you and, or to greet you all and to give you some additional background on the services and the strength of her team. You may have noted that the contract is under the General Manager's signing authority. However, as we do with our federal advocacy contract, we wanted to bring this to the board and give you an opportunity to meet Rosanna as well. I'll go through very briefly just some of the proposed activities that we have negotiated with Rosanna and her team. Those include building on our existing relationships and contacts with legislators. We do have some very strong ties here locally for our local representatives, but there are others outside of our area that play a significant role in shaping the water industry within the state, and we would like to strengthen those ties as well. We would also like to align, make sure that everything that she's doing is going to align with our legislative platform that we adopted earlier this year, and her firm will also assist us with drafting position letters and tracking priority bills. Looking towards the horizon, she will also assist us with meeting and engaging with Sacramento leaders as well as strengthening our ties with Aqua and C S D A staff. Her team will also provide updates on potential grant opportunities and provide strategic counsel as we move forward. Both Brian and I have met with Rosanna on our last couple trips to Sacramento, and I do feel confident that she's prepared to advocate in our behalf and ensure that we have a voice in Sacramento at all times of the year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them today, or we can wait for Monday when Rosanna is back.
Any questions or comments today? Director Martin? Director Meyer?
No.
Director Duff?
Just one, and it actually came from your slide presentation. Engage with Aqua and C S D A. Can we make sure that also includes CASA and any other wastewater organizations and lobbying organizations that we're members or guest members of?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Vice President?
I'll reserve most of my comments for Monday since I do met her, but I've been waiting for this.
And I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten, Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero two and Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-four, updating and amending codification titles one through three. It is recommended to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero two and Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-four, updating and amending titles one, two, and three of the district code. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. I would ask our Assistant General Manager Marion Champion for this item. Marion?
Thank you. As we discussed in the workshop last week, today I have a list of proposed changes to titles one, two, and three of the administrative code that we adopted last month. These changes will fix inconsistencies and bring our current, our older resolutions and our ordinances into compliance with current requirements and district needs. I'm going to go through each of the proposed changes very briefly. In your packet is also a redline version of the proposed changes. We will start with the first change in section one point O two point one zero that relates to the adoption of the conflict of interest code, which we did at last month's board meeting. This starts on page two hundred and three of your packet and moves through to page two hundred and four in your packet. You'll notice the biggest change is on page two hundred and four. Besides the date and resolution change, we remove the government and public affairs manager position from the conflict of interest filer requirements. Excellent. Moving on to Title Two, starting on page two hundred and seven through two hundred and eight in your packet, we're making updates to the smoking in the boardroom resolution. We're adding in vaping, and we're making this language consistent with the previously adopted personnel rules. We are also updating section two point O one point O four O, which is related to the administration, administrative decisions. This change brings our code in line with the code of civil procedures and will provide an orderly and reasonable procedure for the review of certain decisions of the district. As Caitlin mentioned in our workshop last week, when it makes sense, we're streamlining the language so that our, our M S W D code refers to the law. So this, in this case, it refers to the Civil Code, and that ensures that our laws and regulations are changed, or that ensures that our regulations within our M S W T D code stay in compliance with the current law as they change. Our next set of changes clears up the board election information that Director Griffith pointed out when we originally adopted this. It also clearly defines the election. It, it fixes where the, when there's a vacancy, the division requirements, when there's a vacancy. It also clearly defines the election years for each division. I also wanted to note that since this part of our M S W D code was originally adopted through an ordinance, our changes will also be adopted through an ordinance. This ordinance is on page one ninety-seven in your packet. Another change in the Title Two is on page two hundred and eleven, section two point zero three point zero two zero. It relates to special meetings and calling of special meetings. The revised language refers back to the Brown Act requirements for notifications. Once again, this does streamline our language, and it keeps us in line with the current laws. Even if the current laws change, our code will remain current. Next, we will be moving on to page two hundred and thirteen in your packet. This is the executive summary for the board handbook. In reviewing our code, we noticed that we had old core values, so we have updated it with our current core values. It now reflects accountability, leadership, professionalism, and service. We also adjusted the language slightly to remove the service service reference that was noticed last week during the workshop. And our last change is in Title Three. It is on, it's title, title three, section three point zero one O eight zero. It's rule eight, the no smoking policy. We have updated this section to include vaping so that it mirrors the language that was adopted in the Title Two with the boardroom no smoking provision and keeps us so that both areas are aligned. As I mentioned earlier, we do have both an ordinance and a resolution in your packet today for your consideration. At next month's workshop, we'll be bringing additional changes to other titles as we continue to work through each of these sections to refine and improve the language. If you have any questions today, I can take them now, or we can also look at that Monday, whatever you'd like.
Any questions or comments, Director Duff? Director Martin? Director Meyer?
No.
Vice President?
Yes. I'm going to go backwards, so I don't forget that. How often do we have minors in our?
Vice President, your mic, please.
Sorry. How often do we have minors in our vehicles?
Only when we have our internship programs.
Okay.
So that is, the best of my knowledge, that would be the only time.
Okay.
Since I've been.
Um, so page two oh nine, chapter two point zero two and D. Again, I'm kind of wondering why we're talking about the by-division election system shall be implemented beginning at the next regular election of the Board of Directors, but it's already been implemented. Should that not be in the past?
It's referring back to the resolution that was originally adopted. And when the original resolution going to divisions, it was adopted in the future, and that's why this language is still in the past tense. But I can make that change. I think, let me confer with Caitlin and verify that we can make that change.
Okay.
We may have to change the resolution slightly as well. So you can expect to see that probably on Monday.
Yeah, I mean, it says, you know, beginning, it's one thing to say we switched, these divisions began in twenty twenty and will be every four after, but this makes it seem like it's not going to happen until after November.
I'll, I'll make that change.
I mean, you know, maybe nobody else catches that stuff, but that's all I got.
And my only question was, do we need on Monday to separate the ordinance and the resolution, or can we vote on that combined?
You know, Brian?
I believe, excuse me, I believe the staff report and the action was to adopt both at the same time.
Okay.
But we can confirm that when legal is here on, on Monday.
Okay. And I guess one more question. Did we have a lot change from the workshop to this that's in the packet?
Just the service service, and there's a couple of numbering areas where I cleaned them up a little bit.
Okay. Director Duff?
And so if we could actually go back to the slide you had up most recently about the smoking in the vehicles, and I'll start with that. It's going to be slide eight, page two forty-eight in our book. So I just was, I guess something was bugging me as I was reading this over and over again. And so I looked at the state and the state law and the federal law, and it says not just building and structure, but it says window, door, or H VAC system. And I don't know if we need to go that far, but we do need to make sure our employees know that stepping just outside the door or stepping under a window or stepping in a walkway where, where our customers may be going is equally not appropriate. And then it says a smoking or vaping of any kind. I think it needs to say any substance.
Okay.
And it just kind of clarifies that so that it's not vague. That's kind of what I was worried about. And then if we can go back, and this was not on your list, but page two thirty-seven, section three point zero one point O five zero. It's talking about the electric media uses and rules and regulations for our employees and people who are accessing technology here. And I just have a couple of comments about this. You're, it's laid out a, you know, here's the definition, here's the authorization, here's what can be done by employees, and then it goes into improper use with one, two, and three, and then it goes back to district access to technology resources, expectation of privacy. It seems to me that the improper use should be right before the actions taken against an employee. It's like it needs to be number N instead of number C and, and just put that reorder it.
Mm-hmm.
So that everyone can read all the rules before, so they understand everything before they, it's kind of injected out of order, in my opinion. And then I'm noticing there's nothing in here, and I don't know if this has to be a separate item or not, but with the new A I concerns, there's nothing in here telling employees specifically about using Chat G P T or any of its associative software or, or programs, and that they can never upload M S W D documents, designs, plans, ordinances without direct permission to do so. And I'm only saying this is a concern of mine, because at a recent seminar, they were talking about how if you don't pay for the, you don't pay for the service, it's learning from you, and it makes public everything you insert. So I feel like we need to have something in writing telling our employees that they cannot give our work product away for free in that way. And so I just, I want to make sure we somehow address the A I and Chat G P T. And again, I don't know if this has to come back later, but just something that seems to be missing from that technology.
I think it would be best if we actually developed language for that and then brought it back, not in that much of a hurry. I'm a little concerned if I bring it back Monday, it would be.
That's fine with me.
But we can look at that, and if we can get something, I know we have information that's been sent out to all employees on that topic, but just making it confined or go along with our personnel rules, that might need to wait until.
And again, no rush. I just figured since we're here, now's the opportunity to, to put that on the radar and get that on the list, so to speak. And then also, I had a question in reading the vehicle use policy, which was on page two sixty-six. Under C, it said driver's training, and here's what it says. The district's insurance policy requires that every employee who operates a district vehicle receive regular driver's training. I'm just curious, because regular is kind of vague. How is, how regular is regular? What kind of training are we providing all of our employees that drive our vehicles?
I believe, and this is more Oriana's area than mine, but I believe it's every two years, we have a defensive driving course. I just finished it maybe a month ago myself.
Okay.
And I've done it now twice since I've been an employee.
And two years is regular according to the employee, according to our insurance?
I would have to defer to Oriana or Brian main.
And J P A actually gave us the training. So yes, we were in compliance with that, but there's also for different classifications, air brakes and things like that. There's other regular trainings that they have to do as well. So in addition to the defensive drivers that all of us do, but other classes as well.
Had to ask. I just, like, regular is, is subjective, but how regular and what kind of training are we doing? So thank you for educating me. Appreciate that. And then I would like, and I think this is going to be another one of those that we're going to need more intensive discussion. So I would like to see us bring back section or chapter three point O four. And I'd like to see that extend all the way through. Sorry, give me one second. All the way through. Yeah, two seventy-four, the hours of work, holidays, and leave, and then make that go all the way through the completion of the sick and F M L A leave. I'm trying to find the number for you.
So family care is three point O four point six O or point O five O, which is just sick leave.
So I'd like it to go to the end of that.
Through, through family care.
Yes, please.
Would you like to bring that back to the workshop next month?
That would be fantastic if we could, and I'll happily share with management some of my concerns and questions I had at times. And then the last thing I had, and I believe this is just a typo or a printing issue, it may not exist online, but on page three fourteen, it says B testify under O, and then it says C slash, 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 slash.
That's just a typo.
So it does, it either didn't print or C needs to be erased.
Perfect. That's just.
Could be. Could be.
That's my pity for resting on the keyboard. Like a little line?
That's, it's a cat on a keyboard.
But online it showed that? Okay.
It's the printer.
So anyway, that was that for me. Thank you very much for hearing me. Absolutely.
I think that's it.
Thank you all for the feedback. I greatly appreciate it.
Item eleven, execution of lot line adjustment application for the Critical Services Center. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to do all things necessary to sign and execute all necessary entitlement documents on behalf of Mission Springs Water District and the Lot Line Adjustment Application with the City of Desert Hot Springs for the Critical Services Center and submit it to the City of Desert Hot Springs for processing and execution. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, obviously, this is a lot line adjustment, it's a survey issue that we're working with as part of the Planning Commission application, which will now go in September. It's hard to separate this particular item from the update from the Critical Services Center. So if the questions go back and forth and we have to give more of a presentation of the entire project, we're prepared to do that. Um, Eric is here to give the, or, excuse me, our engineering manager, Eric Weck, is here to give this specific item, but also on the call is Alan Flores to give the presentation for the discussion item for an update. But if those get co-mingled, that's okay. We're prepared to go either way, depending on how the questions of the board come. So please, Eric, if you'd like to give your presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And can you see the PowerPoint?
Not yet. Now we can.
Very good. Okay. Well, good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item eleven of this afternoon's agenda pertains to a lot line adjustment that's needed for the Critical Services Center. And also to authorize a general manager to sign and execute the necessary lot line adjustment and entitlement documents with the City of Desert Hot Springs. MSWD is met with the City of Desert Hot Springs on a few occasions to coordinate with them on the location, the sighting, and the overall entitlement process of the proposed Critical Services Center that will be relocated, that will be located at the existing MSWD corporate yard. Uh, from the photo there, you can see that the, that as a result of the new lot line adjustment, that red boundary will be, uh, the location where the new Critical Services Center will be located. A lot line adjustment, uh, is, will be necessary to adjust the current property lines to allow the Critical Services Center to be cited on one of MSWD's properties. This is a relatively minor um administrative procedure on the part of the city and MSWD and is typical for proposed developments to allow for the necessary building footprints and improvements to be placed on property without crossing existing property lines. Now likewise, in the upcoming weeks, um, as uh, General Manager Macy indicated, the city will place this project on the planning commission agenda for approval and staff will recommend that the board authorize the general manager to sign and execute the necessary applications and documents so as not to delay the approval of the Critical Services Center for MSWD. Um, are there any questions?
Any questions, Director Duff? Vice President? Director Martin?
No.
Director Meyerhoffen? I think we're good, Eric. Thank you so much.
I think he, he's got the next item.
I've got the next one off.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No worries. Moving on, item twelve, approved contract amendment number three with Yellow Jacket Drilling Services LLC for the construction of monitoring well. Number two, it is recommended to authorize the general manager to approve contract amendment number three with Yellow Jacket Drilling Services LLC in the amount of twenty seven thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars for the construction of the monitoring well. Number two, for the regional water reclamation facility and to do all things necessary to complete the project, the construction amendment would increase the contract amount twenty seven thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars from two hundred and two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars to two hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Eric?
Eric, please go ahead.
Thank you, sir. And uh, good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Now, being part of the overall Nancy Wright um, reclamation facility, construction, um, the California Regional Water Quality Control Board requires MSWD to locate and construct three monitoring wells to monitor changes in groundwater quality that's down gradient of the new facility. So right here, we have just some um background uh about the project, about the contractor. And um, uh, I'll get into uh more discussion about the uh monitoring wells here. So initially, the state reviewed and approved the proposed location of all three monitoring wells. Now, on this exhibit here, you can see at the top, there's monitoring well one, that's in red, uh, as well as monitoring well three and monitoring well two A. Those initially were the three that we uh submitted to the state and they initially approved. Um, uh, upon that approval, MSWD then solicited bids and contracted with Yellow Jacket Drilling to construct the monitoring wells. Now, during construction, the state reached out to us and required that the third well be relocated from its previously approved location, which necessitates MSWD securing and paying for an easement from a property owner, which was a previously approved earlier this year to site the well at the new location. So if you can see my mouse, initially, we were looking at one, two, I'm sorry, three and two A. So we told the state, this is where two A was going to be. And they were, initially, they were agreeable to that. And then they came back to us and said, no, we want you to locate it, locate uh the well at over here where the blue circle is, and that's called well number two. So since the time of the original agreement between um uh, between MSWD and Yellow Jacket Drilling, construction and labor costs have increased. And included in the agenda packet is a breakdown of those increased costs. These costs, however, are reimbursable through the grant funding, the construction uh of the, of the construction of the regional plant, and staff will request reimbursement of these increased costs. And so uh, staff recommends the board authorizing the general manager to approve the contract amendment number three with Yellow Jacket Drilling Services for the completion of monitoring well number two. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Director Duff?
Starting me every time now.
I started with the rest of the government.
Um, I do have, I, I don't, okay, two things. One, in reading through um, their previous information, it appears as though all of their bonds and insurance has expired. So I'm assuming they will be providing us with all updated um documentation, bonds, insurance, uh, workers' comp, et cetera, et cetera, because all of those are listed here as being expired over a year.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the, the last comment I want to make. And, and I appreciated the detail in your report um, because it's actually what allowed me to make sense of what was going on. Um, so in here, you said that, you know, that um it was going above the uh percentage of overage that we allow in the contract. And I don't know, was that a five percent contingency that was allowed?
I believe it's ten.
Ten? Okay. Um, so the only thing I didn't like about the way this was worded was that we needed to have been saying that it was also increasing to encompass the eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars remaining in the um contingency. So in total, it's, it's really more of a forty-six thousand dollar um increase to, to what's going on. And, and I, he's, it says there's an itemized cost increase, but there was no cost associated to the contractor's statement that he was required to remobilize and that there would be costs associated, I'm assuming, with that statement. Can you give me an idea of what his remobilization costs were in his itemized statement?
What's included in the, in the remobilization, ma'am, is um during, see the area where it says monitoring well number two in the blue circle, that area actually was affected by Hurricane Hillary. And uh, there is some uh debris that uh wasn't previously there and is a, uh, I believe it's an uneven surface. And so that mobilization cost will also cover the um uh cost of an excavator and, and a um bulldozer to level out the site for the drill rig to be able to get in there and complete that third and final monitoring well.
Okay. And I'm not familiar with the, the well drill sites and the construction related with that, but will this include all of the construction management on the site and any dust mitigation? Is that all included here?
Yes.
And any increases are already here? So we're not going to get another one saying now we need more?
It should be a complete turnkey um agenda item that covers that.
Because although it's, it's reimbursable by the grant, we already have gone above what we're being reimbursed in total. So reality of this forty-six thousand, although it's reimbursable, our total grant is, is already fully encompassed. So that forty-six thousand dollars is, is going to be extra out of, out of our income. So I just wanted to be clear, we understood where that was and where it was coming from. Thank you very much.
Vice President?
I always tell you to do your most difficult work first. Everything else is easy.
General, uh, Director Martin?
Yeah, did the uh state or explain why they initially gave approval and then backtracked on it and said, uh, no? I mean, did they ever give an explanation of why that was?
Yes, sir. From what I understand, um, they gave initial approval for the three monitoring wells that were, that are in red. And uh, then after our project started, they forwarded the geotechnical information to their uh, uh, geologist, and their geologist was the one that made the call on that to relocate it.
No, I'm concerned that every that we proceeded on, on, on project and their changes wound up costing us more money. I think that that
It's not fair.
That's unfortunate. Yeah.
Director Meyerhoffen?
No.
And then I have a question, I guess it's a little more general, but I guess I had never thought about it, and Director Duff brought up a good point. When we do these contract amendments, is that contingency amount? Um, just because looking at this, that twenty-seven thousand, to me, it looked like thirteen, fourteen percent increase. But then if you do factor into that contingency and it's closer to forty-five thousand increase, that's a pretty big difference from thirteen, it's thirty some odd percent increase. Um, is that consistent every time we have a adjustment?
No. No, it's not consistent. Um, I believe also uh that there is contingency left from their previous efforts. And so I, I think we're only adding twenty-seven thousand six forty-five because there's a little bit of contingency still remaining on the contract.
Okay. And sorry if I'm opening a whole can of worms, but I'm just trying to think back to other amendments we've done. If that was the case, that that contingency is exhausted before we add on to it.
No, I, I think both your points are well taken. If we need to be, here we're trying to add clarifying language to clarify the issue, and I think we didn't do a very good job clarifying it. So I think you're absolutely right. When we're taking a contract amendment to the board, we need to also keep in mind that if there's available contingency, the actual increase to the contract may only be twenty-seven thousand dollars, but the extra work is forty-five thousand dollars or forty-two thousand. So I think we'll, we'll just try to do a better job of explaining that either maybe not in the action item, but definitely in the summary or the analysis section of the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to discussion items. Item thirteen, Nancy Wright, Regional Water Reclamation Facility Update.
Uh, TK is not here today nor will he be here on Monday, but the update is pretty straightforward. As you know, we've been working with Calif, or Southern California Edison and negotiated an easement for almost past four years. We are finally very close as we've taken ver- various different avenues or directions to get to where we are. We are very close. We expect to have the agreement to us by the end of the week, which will then allow us to uh ask Downey Construction to complete the work in that easement and then start getting water town to the Nancy Wright facility. So that's the only real update is that easement negotiation, and we're getting very close. And like I said, we should be able to get the agreement by the end of the month, or the end of the week and get started. And it, and then of course be available to have a ribbon cutting with actual wastewater in the plant. So.
Any questions or comments, Director Martin? Director Meyerhoffen?
No.
Vice President?
Where do we stand on any of our reimbursements?
Um. We are still going back and forth with the state. I met with Steve Ledbetter earlier this week, and we were talking about the FBA, not only for this one, but also the review for M two. Uh, they are still being delayed. So what seems to work when we talk to the state about these reimbursements or the FBAs or even their review is to talk to them about next time we're up. Fortunately, next time we're up in Sacramento. Fortunately, we've had these discussions in the past. It's been right before we've gone up for a conference or something like that. But I think the level of importance and where we are, uh, if we have to make a special trip to go up there and talk with them, we will. And that's about where I am right now. I just haven't had a chance to write the email threatening to come up there and sit in their office until they see me and talk about what the delays truly are.
Give me some dates.
We'll do on Monday.
Director Duff?
I'm gonna hold comments on, on the concerns I have with the FBA and the reimbursements, but I am equally concerned with all the changes the state has required that our accounting is being kept correct. And I want to make sure that we're holding our contractors accountable for making sure that we get the proper documentation from them to update our files when they've made corrections as to what went to the state. I, I I can't help but be concerned that we repeatedly get these requests to resubmit invoices for missing information or, or information that is not clarified correctly or, or documented properly. And these kind of delays, they fall on us every single time. And so that I understand and appreciate, General Manager Macy, your willingness to go up with whoever is willing to uh go talk to the state up north, but at the same time, I think we need to be applying equal pressure on our contractors and on our uh, uh, management uh team that is contracted to handle this to ensure that they are submitting correctly the first time. They're getting all the correct data timely. And if, if we need to start penalizing them or any of their subcontractors for not meeting those contractual, contractual obligations, then I believe we need to start doing so. Thank you.
Right. I guess my only comment is I like the idea of speaking directly with the state and trying to figure out, is it them being unreasonable, or is it our contact tractor missing information? Um, but I look forward to another. Thank you. Item fourteen, Critical Services Center and Administrative Building Update.
Thank you, President Sewell. I will introduce Alvin Flores from RCA. Alvin?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Uh, good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board and district staff. Last we spoke in June, um, right after that board meeting, we had submitted the uh documents to planning. And about mid-July, uh, planning deemed the supplemental complete, uh, started the review. And as of last week, we started getting conditions uh from the city. We are still waiting on engineering, but we have conditions from CAL FIRE. Uh, we also have conditions from uh MSWD, which is part of the process. So uh, we checked that box off as well. Um, and right now, we're just waiting on comments from engineering. So once we get those comments from engineering, then uh, we'll go through all those conditions with uh MSWD staff, uh, review it to make sure that everything uh looks copacetic and that we'll be able to move forward. Uh, as of now, we're also working directly with the city to make sure that we're, we are already on the September uh agenda. So that way, again, we're just keeping this process going as smooth as possible. Uh, we also just heard back from the city that the environmental package that was submitted simultaneously with the planning's package, uh, there are no comments from the city. So that included the infill exemption and a very um various technical studies. So uh, as of now, everything seems to be going very smooth. Um, while we're also waiting on those last set of conditions, we've been coordinating with uh, the other city departments, uh, engineering and building department, uh, in preparation for the final permitting requirements. So the moment that all the planning conditions are in place, we are gonna go ahead and submit for that permitting requirement. And then that will hopefully be the last stage before we get everything bid and ready to go into construction. So if there's any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Director Martin?
No.
Director Meyerhoff?
No.
Director Duff?
Could we pull up the slide from the lot line discussion that we had a little bit ago?
Let's see, make sure I have a copy of that, otherwise hopefully Eric is still on the line. Let's see. Perfect.
So I was trying to take the preliminary solar plans for this site and insert them. And I was trying to figure out where they are. And I'm thinking that they're in that bottom corner that kind of looks like an open construction field, kind of in the bottom, yeah, right there. Is that where the solar field will be going on the Horton property?
Yes.
And is there any way for us in the near future to kind of get a layout of how the ponds are going to be redone? Are we that far or no?
Very quickly, the pond where you see the triangle number two, that pond and the pond to its east will simply be slid to the east. You see the area where it looks like there's an old pond or an overflow, a smaller pond. We're basically going to take those two ponds, combine them with that, that sort of small pond there. There is from a roadway, from a roadway paving project, there's some of the spoils that are there, those are going to be relocated. So basically those two ponds into, in their current size and form will simply be just shifted to the east. The pond south of the, the two triangle will, will be removed. And that's really the, that's the only configuration changes that are going to be made. It's those two ponds going to the east and then the pond that's basically semi, half of it being taken away will come away in its totality.
And then the, the natural gas, gas station thing that was that they're moving completely or getting rid of it completely? Because I don't see where that is being put back.
So that natural gas line, Danny's not here, I believe, and we can clarify this on Monday. I believe just simply goes east and west along Park Lane. So they could move it wherever they'd like to in that facility and we're willing to work with them. The reason we don't know exactly where it's going to go is we have not notified them that that's going to have to be relocated. We have a six-month window that starts every, once a year annually with the automatic renewal of that lease agreement. That lease agreement starts in April. So if we gave it to them in April in twenty twenty-five, they'd be required to be out of there by November as a hard deadline. If we're not ready to use that area by November twenty twenty-five, then they can stay there a little bit longer. But we do know the sequencing of that, so.
Beautiful.
Great question.
Just wanted to kind of get a better visual of the whole, sorry, the whole complex. And I was trying to piece together pictures from here, pictures from here and try and get that big picture. So appreciate that. And then just to clarify, the, the lot line, it's not really changing along the, the park and the parks, parking lot, correct? Because it's shown as red there, but that's existing, isn't it?
No, it's not. Actually, the corporate yard and the park property, all one parcel. So we're actually carving out our area for the corporate yard. And we believe that when the APN is, is given, it will be to the new parcel. Because typically the bigger parcel keeps that APN, so it will continue to be oh five, zero zero five will be that parcel and will only be the park area.
Okay, thank you for those clarifications. Alvin, great work and I will be there to support you in September. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President?
I love the background, that's all I have to say.
It is this valley, so.
I have nothing further. Thank you, Alvin.
Thank you, Alvin.
Consent agenda consists of item fifteen, approval of minutes, item sixteen, register of demands, and item seventeen, acceptance of the water supply assessment and water supply verification for the Biento Development Project. Would we like to discuss any of those separately?
I need a little time for register of demands. Is it possible we talk about that on Monday? Thank you.
And did we want any staff report on seventeen or?
It's a pretty straightforward process. The board has seen water supply assessments and water supply verification. That's why it's on the consent calendar. We are prepared to give a presentation if the board wants to hear about it, but we have plenty of water to provide water to that particular site. It's right next to our new treatment facility. So that we do have, we are prepared, but if there's no questions, we'll just leave it on the consent and move forward.
Okay, anyone like to discuss it? We'll move on to directors' reports. Did anyone want to give their directors' reports today? Monday? Item nineteen, General Manager's Report. We have the Finance Report and Public Affairs Report today?
We do, we do. First, I'd like to introduce Arturo Sehal, Director of Finance, to give the financial report.
Well, thank you, General Manager Macy, President Sewell and members of the board. I'll just do a quick update on the financial statements for the district. Do understand, we normally don't present June to the board because we're in the middle of the audit and these numbers will definitely change. I just want to give you an update of where we're, we're stand so that you don't wait another three months for us to come up with these reports. As you can see, operating income, revenue, that's pretty straightforward. It is what it is. June thirty, that's what came through. There's really no adjustment on that, so that probably will remain the same. Operating expenses are below budget and that is just timing. We sent out an email to all staff that are responsible for coding accounts payable that they have until the end of the month to be able to close out the year and move on to the next year so that we can put all those numbers in front of the auditors and then have to wait. So that number will change as all of those invoices come through, especially on some of those vendors that take their time to send us their information. The biggest issue or the biggest item in the report is that non-operating revenue. That is what we budgeted for the grant. As we have delayed some of those projects, those monies are delayed until the following year. So you'll see that in the next year's budget as well. So that's the biggest difference from what we budgeted is that grant amount. One of the items here that is of review is that cash increase. You can see cash going up over the last year by seventeen million dollars. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but we do have like, the reason for that is we have several vacancies on staff. I believe we have seven right now. We have some of the projects that have been delayed because of the delay, excuse me, delay in getting those materials to the district, including for the regional plant. And so that cash flow that we were expecting to be a lot less is more at the end of the year, which is a good thing. We'll have that cash to pay back the loan. However, as we said, we want to extend that and I'm still in the contract with that. But overall, you can see that we are over in last year seventeen million dollars for those delays and also delay in expenses that we have not had until we come up with those final numbers for the accounts payable. And I'll answer any questions.
Director Duff? Vice President? Director Martin? Director Meyerhoff?
No, thank you for the update.
Thank you, Arturo.
The second presentation will be our Public Affairs Report by Assistant General Manager Mary Champion. Mary?
Thank you. Thank you, President Sewell, members of the board. I have a short PowerPoint today that I'd like to share that highlights some of the activities of the Public Affairs Office during the past month. Additional updates are in your packet. We are starting to ramp back up into our event season with several notable events coming up in the next few months, including the Urban Water Institute Annual Conference next week, the CSDA Annual Conference next month, the State of the City Luncheon on October third, and the Aquafall Conference the first week of December. We also have another blood drive taking place on September eleventh, which will play tribute to the men and women who lost their lives on that date back in two thousand and one. Additional updates are available in the event calendar that Dory sends out regularly. And as the students are now heading back into the classrooms, it's once again time for MSWD to launch our calendar drawing contest, taking place now through October second. Twelve winners will have their water conservation or groundwater protection drawings published in our district's twenty twenty-five community calendar. They will also receive an Amazon gift card worth a hundred and fifty dollars for first place, a hundred dollars for second place, fifty dollars for third place and twenty five dollars for all other drawings that are selected for the calendar. The contest is open to all students within the MSWD service area. They can enter by creating an original picture depicting one of the following six messages. Saving water, proper disposal of fats, oil and grease, water-wise car washing, drinking water quality, don't flush wipes, and water-efficient desert landscaping. Drawings should be created on white paper with crayons, print and or colored pencils and pens. The full color artwork is definitely preferred over black and white and computer-generated artwork will not be included. We will be promoting the contest in several different ways, including the news release that was issued yesterday, apparent e-blast going out to students within Palm Springs Uni, or parents within Palm Springs Unified School District, teacher and principal outreach, social media, both paid and unpaid, flyer distribution, and then our community newsletters, Mission Lakes Country Club, Skyborne, and then of course our MSWD newsletter. Speaking of the students, I also wanted to highlight a program that I'm not sure we really talk about very often. It's called the Living Wise Program. For several years now, MSWD has partnered with SoCal Gas to bring this program to the sixth grader classrooms within our service area. The program is a school-based energy, water and gas efficiency education program designed to generate immediate and long-term savings by bringing interactive, real-world education home to students and their family. The program is offered to the sixth grade educators throughout our service area. The participating classroom teachers follow the, are given a teacher book and lesson plans and that all follow state guidelines. Students also receive a kit containing high-efficiency measures that they can take home and install within their homes and share with their parents. The act of installing and monitoring new efficiency devices in their homes allows students to put their learning into practice. As part of the program, students are asked to complete a ten-question test before the program starts and then again after it's finished. This last year, the average student answered five point eight, they, questions right. They got five point eight on the questions before the, the program. And then after the program, they had a seven point oh as their average. In addition, the students and their families are asked to complete home surveys. Based on those result, results, we can actually compute the savings. And those are what you see up on the screen. In general, you can see almost nine hundred and eighty-six thousand gallons of water are going to be saved annually by each of the students with a lifetime savings as much as seven million gallons over their lifetime. These are pretty lofty numbers, so I personally take them with a grain of salt. However, this does reinforce a trend that we are seeing throughout the valley, which is students really do have an understanding of how to save water. Messages like turning off the water when you brush your teeth, that seems like common practice to them and they almost look at you like you're crazy if you're even reminding them of that. So I do think that in general, as, as when we do our outreach, we're going to have to continue to elevate those messages and to make them more sophisticated as we move forward. Speaking about messages and, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the customer newsletter. In July, we highlighted the summer internship program, our water quality report, the pass-along fees, the city utility users tax and desert water agencies rack fees. In August, when you receive that, you'll see our calendar drawing contest. You'll see a message about skipping overseeding and saving water. And you'll also see something about the tamarisk trees and the root systems, which are very invasive to our plumbing. One more event that I'd like to draw your attention to, that is the Save the Date that Brian mentioned earlier for our Nancy Wright Regional Water Reclamation Facility. That will be set for Friday, September twenty-seventh at nine thirty AM. In addition to the ribbon-cutting ceremony, we'll have light refreshments, tours of the facility, and we'll have special guests speaking, speakers, including Joaquin Escible, Chair of the State Water Resources Control Board, Peter Satin, Chair of the Colorado River Basin Regional Water Control Quality Control Board, Scott Mattis, Mayor of Desert Hot Springs, Grace Gardner, Council Member of City Palm Springs. And I have additional invites out to speakers, and so we may be adding a few more as we get closer. Lastly, September is emergency preparedness month. Throughout the month of September, we'll be sharing and promoting information to our customers to help them prepare should an emergency happen. One of the items that we will be sharing is our updated video. And I'm going to go ahead and ask Kurt to please play that.
We can't hear anything on Zoom.
We can start it over. And maybe we share.
Ready to respond with an emergency can happen at any time. Floods, earthquakes, fires, whether it's a natural disaster or other unforeseen event. Mission Springs Water District is ready to respond with crews on standby twenty-four seven to restore services as quickly as possible. While MSWD ensures both water and wastewater utilities are running smoothly, it's important our customers are also prepared. Having an emergency preparedness kit is a great start. Here's what to include. At least three gallons of water per person to cover the first three days after an emergency, non-perishable food, a can opener and utensils, first aid kit and toolkits, a flashlight and batteries. Everyday essentials such as prescription medications, an extra pair of eyeglasses, clothing and jackets should also be included. Creating a family disaster plan with evacuation routes and meeting places is also important. You can find free planning sheets and guides on our website, mswd.org. MSWD urges everyone to take emergency preparedness seriously because it's never too early to be prepared. To learn more, visit mswd.org.
And that concludes my presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Director Duff?
Great job on that video, timely as well. As I was just reading an article this morning that Southern California has experienced more earthquakes in the last sixty days than in recent history. So it's good to be prepared and I think that was a great video and great timing.
Vice President? Director Martin?
Yes, as usual, top, top-notch presentation and I really appreciate the effort needed in community outreach. This is awesome. Thank you.
Director?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And General Manager, anything further on your report?
No, the, our report is in the, in the packet. If you have any questions, we can address them on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will not be having district council comments or, or district council comments or closed session. But before that, we do have our directors' comments and requests. Director Martin?
Yeah, I think I've already stated what was on my mind during that too. Thank you.
Director Meyerhoff?
I'd like to request that in our next closed session, we discuss the actions of a director from a different district.
For clarification, I, I think we have had discussions in the past during closed session about the actions of a Board of Director from another agency. Apparently the situation has been repeated. So I think we'd like to talk about it again to see if there's any action we can take. So it'd be potential litigation, but I'll work with JP to make sure we get the language correct.
Okay, and that would be Monday?
Yes, we'll get it on for Monday's agenda.
Director Duff? Vice President? And I'll just say, I know the last week, week and a half has been, I'm sure, a hard time for most of our staff. And I just want to say the board is proud of all the work you do and we're here to support you where we can. So thank you. With that, no closed session, meeting is adjourned.